Good evening. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for being at tonight's meeting of the Westerville City Schools Board of Education. The agenda will be displayed on the screens in the front of the room. You may also follow along connecting to the district's website, wcsoh.org. Click on the district link, then Board of Education, then Board Doc's Agenda, and select this evening's meeting. There will be two opportunities to address the board this evening, the first being Agenda Item 6.01. The first set of public comments is relative to Agenda Items 7.01 through 11.02. Please state the agenda item that you wish to address at the beginning of your comments. The second opportunity is Agenda Item 12.01. There is a sign-up sheet located at the back of the room. Each speaker will have five minutes to address the board. A timer will be shown on the screen. And with that, Ms. Marshall, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Altman?
Here.
Mrs. Davidson?
Here.
Dr. Nussbaker?
Here.
Mr. Bell?
Here.
Mr. Velardo?
Here. Would you please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Moving on to Agenda Item 3.01, Approval of the Minutes of the Regular Board of Education Meeting Held February 10, 2020. And I will ask for a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you much. Do we have any discussion, questions, items to bring up? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Dr. Nussbaker?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Four, District Highlights and Recognitions, 4.01. We always say this because it really means a lot to us that we are allowed to recognize the incredible work that many of our students and faculty and staff do across the district. Tonight, we have a very special young lady who is going to be recognized from North High School, Westerville North High School. And at this time, I'd like to invite to the podium Principal Kurt Yancey from Westerville North High School while the board, Dr. Kellogg and Ms. Marshall and I go out front here.
Thank you, President Velardo, Superintendent Kellogg, Treasurer Marshall, members of the Board of Education. It is my pleasure as the Principal of Westerville North High School to be here tonight to present to you one of the finest young women in central Ohio, Ms. Grace Blanchong. She has been selected to receive the Zonta Award this year. Zonta is the largest women's service organization in the world, and their mission is to empower women locally, nationally, and internationally through service and advocacy. Zonta only selects 12 young women from the entire central Ohio area to honor with this award, and Grace is one of them. It is a true honor and one that is well-deserved. Grace was selected for this award based on her dedication to leadership, service to others, and academic excellence. She has taken a multitude of advanced classes at Westerville North and carries a weighted cumulative GPA of 4.64. She is currently working on a project through the Global Scholars Program to create and build a safe space in our front office for our students to go when they are experiencing intense anxiety. Grace is a phenomenal young person with an incredible future, and Zonta has chosen to recognize her as one of the finest young women in the area. Ladies and gentlemen, Ms. Grace Blanchong.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you so much. Yes. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Hi. I just wanted to say thank you for this opportunity, one, from all the people at North, my principals, guidance counselors, and teachers that nominated me for this, to everyone here for giving me this opportunity, and especially to the women of Zonta for letting me connect with amazing other young women in central Ohio. So, thank you.
I was just getting your attention. Sorry. Grace, this is a little bit off the cuff, but would you like to introduce the people who are here with you, supporting you?
This is my mom, I don't know if I got it right, and my sister, I love that. Hi.
We really appreciate the work that you've done, and I think that we would all say you are also coming from a tremendous high school with wonderful administration, support staff, teachers, administrators, all. And I know that they are one of the reasons, one of the reasons why you have achieved this goal. So come back, tell us what's happening in your world down the road. We'd love to stay connected with you. So congratulations. Moving on to Agenda Item 5.01, Portrait of a Graduate. This is a report, and I think we'll be hearing from several people. Am I correct? Several people. Okay.
Good evening, Dr. Kellogg, President Velardo, members of the board, Mrs. Marshall. Our academic affairs team is here tonight in force to share some exciting work. Team, would you would stand? This is our academic affairs team.
Should we applaud them too?
Sure. The academic affairs department has been working collectively with Batel for Kids. Throughout this year, Batel representatives have guided our team through a process of aligning our work, understanding the importance of core competencies, and establishing a common vision for the 21st century learner. The end result will be the portrait of a graduate that will serve as the North Star of our future work. The star candies on your desk represent that North Star, if you're wondering.
That's what I always wondered.
I'm now going to turn it over to Dr. Jennifer Knapp, who will share more of our work with you.
Thank you.
Is this under the category of bribing that we are getting this candy?
It is not bribing. It has been in my office, so you're actually doing me a favor.
Oh.
Because otherwise, it might be consumed by me.
Thank you very much.
So, it is a gift to you. And make sure this is working. Okay. These are just a few examples of the great work our district has been involved in over the past several years, which has led to more opportunities for our students throughout our district, including access to technology, more student-centered learning, and just a wealth of opportunities, particularly at our secondary. We heard a little bit about Global Scholars, and we'll hear more about that later on today. But what we also see are the arrows kind of going everywhere. They're all on the same page. That's great. But just in different directions. Which led us to ask ourselves, how do we best develop, communicate, and implement a common vision? How do we develop this North Star for our district? And so we see another arrow. The key to this work is the idea of deeper learning, the purposeful integration of both our rigorous academic content standards and the 21st century skills our students need. Again, all in one arrow. To help us get to that portrait for our students to contribute to the competitive and changing world in which we live. Next, we will hear from Dr. Scott Ebrecht.
Oh, I'll let you hit play.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
So, we're going to play this video here in just a second, but I want to introduce it. It's a very short video. We believe a picture tells a thousand words. Well, I think a video tells many more than even that. But we want to give you a little three-minute snippet of the future of work, and then have some conversation. Well, actually, it's not a conversation, because I'm just going to tell you more. But just want to share this. So go ahead and play this beautiful footage. So, we want to provide opportunities for kids and open doors for them, so they can recognize some of these advances that will be coming their way and actually are present. But we're also wanting to place an emphasis on the need for our students to decipher, you know, the digital content they're exposed to every day, but also utilize and invent new technology, as again we saw in the video. But I think they missed something in the video, and that's the human component. The human component is essential, and we realize that as a school district, we can provide that to our students. We want them to take into account perspective. We want them to engage in relationships with others, and above all else, be empathetic towards one another. And so, as we're looking at these transferable skills for our students in the future, among this changing workforce, this ever-changing workforce, societal changes, as you saw in the parade, advances in knowledge acquisition and management, technology innovation, but that importance of human interaction. My son, Austin, who is doing a co-op this semester, for the full semester, at a very big company, I asked him, he's actually in a factory doing tests on jet engines. And I said, "To what degree is there automation in your factory?" Because I just watched this video where there's tons of it. He said, "Dad, there's a little bit." He said, "But you got to know how to interact with people. You got to know where to put the leads when you're testing certain parts. You have to make decisions." And I think we don't want to get lost in the fact that this isn't just about technology. It's about what are we doing to create our students and have them evolve and adapt and have those competencies as we move forward. So, just want to place some points of emphasis here. We indeed believe the future is in the classroom. It's with our students and our staff. We desire to create an identity that encompasses preschool through grade 12. As someone that came to the district in middle school, then went to the elementary, and then now pretty much over the high school, a high school program, I see preschool through 12 through a unique lens. And this initiative that we're, this opportunity to develop a portrait of a graduate is something that we've not done in 25 years in our district, preschool through grade 12. And so that's why we're here, to have this opportunity, and know that our current kindergarteners are in the class of 2032. Now, that seems like far off, but yet it's only, you know, we're in 2020 now, right? So 2032 are current kindergarteners. So locally developed but globally positioned, the portrait of a graduate serves as a North Star. You'll hear North Star quite a bit. You can even eat one, as we talked about earlier. For systemic organization transformation, a unified approach based on what we believe are grounding principles. And we believe the portrait of a graduate design process involves a sustained community conversation. It's not in isolation with just a small group of people. We want to make sure that we incorporate views from all facets of our community and our stakeholders, and to ensure that we, that our community is grounded in a portrait of a graduate because it must be tailored within our local context. Next up is Mrs. Relford.
So our desired goal is to create and develop a portrait of a graduate. And you keep hearing the word competencies. And I have a colleague who's going to give you a copy of what Batel has created as the core competencies and the descriptions that was not included in your PowerPoint. The portrait of a graduate, our goal is to create a collective vision that articulates desired skills and competencies for all students. We want to enhance our educational system to support these competencies. And lastly, we want to ensure that all students have an educational experience that prepares them to be effective lifelong learners and contributors. When you look at the next slide, and I have to do double duty here. Oops. It would help if I turned it the other way. So you can tell I'm not accustomed to the pointer. There we go. So forgive me for that error. Here are a few examples of a few districts' work, where they have worked through a process of identifying and prioritizing the companies for their district. And this is what the final product looks like. So we have one from Boone. And I think this is, okay. So now we're going to have Dr., we're going to have Scott Reed's come up and share the rest.
Good evening. That's not the right slide, but I can, I can wing it. As you see from the competencies that you have in front of you, one of the things that you'll notice, and one of the things that we have our principals working on now, is there are a lot of those things that are happening in our classroom. And if you go back to the slide that Dr. Knapp presented to you, it happens, but it doesn't necessarily happen with an intentionality of a common outcome for our kids, that it doesn't matter what elementary school they go to, it doesn't matter what middle school they go to, and it doesn't matter what high school they go to. There is almost a brand of, here are the experiences and the skills that our students will have, and that Westerville diploma means something. So for us to take the work that we've done, and I will say, this team has been amazing, and only a couple of us spoke, but all of them have been equally a part of both developing this presentation and developing this work. Well, we don't want this to be something that is just an exercise in futility that doesn't really change the work that happens in our schools. And so to be very thoughtful and be very methodical, here's kind of how we are marching through to make this a part of the culture of who we are and what our Westerville grads, regardless of their north, south, or central, the skills that they have through our system. The first half of the year, this team has been working with Batel for Kids and developing our understanding and our growth in this work, and extracting from us what we think those high-yield strategies and competencies should be for our kids to be able to compete in the world that they come in. Coming around the semester, in January, at our All Admin meeting, we met with all of our administrators, and our team took them through an exercise. They watched the video, and they did similar activities to begin to gain their understanding of the work that we're doing and what the implications will be for them. Beginning last month, or earlier this month, we, at the secondary level and at the elementary level, began working directly with our principals. And over the next couple of months, we will be extracting from them what they think those strategies and those competencies should be, and are the most valuable and high-yield. And we are preparing them to do a similar activity with their staffs this spring. I would anticipate some kind of work being put out to the community to gain their feedback, whether it's through thought exchange or some other mechanism to get that feedback. And the overall hope is, as we finish our work with Batel for this particular school year, that by the end of the school year, perhaps in June, our entire system could say, we've garnered feedback from everyone in our system. Every staff member had an opportunity to weigh in their thoughts on the experiences of our kids, every administrator in our community. And it's very clear, here's what we think the competencies for a Westerville student should be when they graduate. And we hope to have that at least identified by June. We can start to, as you saw some of the examples of other districts, some are very inventive. What does that actually visually look like as you enter our world? This becomes our brand for all of our schools. And then our work with Batel next year will be about, how do we take this, and how do we begin to implement this within our system? So that all the great things that our staff members do, it's intentional, that every building, still being able to meet the needs of their students and their staff, can look at our portrait of a graduate and say, here's how we fulfill these things through our system here. And so that's the work that we're a part of. We spend a lot of time with it. We believe very deeply in it, and look forward to continuing it. And with that, any questions for our team?
So, yeah, I'm sure. So, just quickly from my perspective, it is, it is an attempt to, your second slide, we have, we have stuff going, good stuff, might not all be going in the same direction, or might not be, A, might not be communicating with B, very well, trying to do an alignment across preschool to 12, to focus on some core competencies, and therefore, how to achieve those core competencies. In these next steps, you said you met with principals, all principals across all grades, right? All schools?
Right.
And are you at the place where you're saying, we're going to take all of these competencies?
So...
Or we're going to pick?
If you, if you go forward into your second point, so here's an example of, of a school district. Here's another example of a school district. So, they extracted the ones that they felt were the highest priorities, the high-yield competencies. I think there's 29 or more on there that would be far too cumbersome.
Right.
So, the exercise that we did with Batel for Kids in October, and what we did with our principals, is take them through exercises, allow them to kind of see the final finished framework, and then had them say, okay, in small groups and then individually, if you had to pick the five that you felt were the most valuable, what five would you pick? And in doing that, we were able to kind of construct, but at the elementary level, at the secondary level, in comparing that with our work, that kind of is how you narrow down, when you force folks to say, here are the most high priorities.
Kind of focusing, focusing on
Yes.
A portrait of a Westerville graduate
Correct.
To contextualize it to us, to, specific to us. And that's what these other schools have done, Boone and Harry'sburg.
Yes. And we will continue to work in our principals, and we are working with our principals, so that in the spring, when we come back from spring break, that they will be able to take all of their staffs through an exercise. And so every single staff member in this district will have the opportunity to provide some similar type of input.
Great.
From that, we hope to extract some commonalities that we, in our system, believe are our competencies.
Yes.
Yes, in our community.
Yep. Thank you. I just, I just wanted to, I just wanted to wrap my head around kind of the entire target of alignment and specificity, the Westerville portrait. I wanted to begin there. So who else?
Jump in, yes.
Okay. So, can you give us an example, how this will impact kids? Is there a story that you've heard or something you can share with us?
So, let's just take this portrait of a graduate for example, as we're developing ours. So you can see some of those competencies that this particular school district decided that was important to them, critical thinking, creativity, communication. So let's say we had something similar, and let's pick creativity. So through our system, what some of the higher-performing school districts have done is said, in the elementary grade bands, this is what creativity looks like in first, second grade. And here's how we develop those skills through there. So that as then they go into middle school, this, in this grade band, here are the opportunities and ways, whether it's something that we do, maybe not intentionally, like an invention convention, or something like that. This is how we are intentional through our system of developing the creativity skills all the way through, to whether it is the culminating project of a performing arts student, whether it is the culminating project of a global scholar student, or something that is intentionally developed, so that when we look at initiatives to our district, to say, here are things that we want to implement in our district. We can say, does it help us do any of these things? As opposed to saying, this sounds cool, and this sounds cool. Does this get us to the ultimate end we are striving for? Because if you think about the last 10 years, how much has this revolutionized our world? How much has Facebook? How much has Twitter? How much has Amazon? And we couldn't even have predicted that 10 years ago. 10 years from now, what else can we not predict? However, those skills, if our students graduate, they will still be marketable and able to adapt to whatever this world has for them. That's what we are hoping for.
So it's not curriculum?
No.
It's not?
No.
It's taking what we have and adding to it. So is it kind of like, and this is, remember how we used to have that character education words, or the word of the month?
Mm-hmm.
Is it a little bit like that infused in everything? Do you remember when it was like?
Well, if you think about that, so you can see that blue, I've got a squint, because 50-year-old eyes don't see as well as they once did.
51.
Not yet. So you can see, the content in the curriculum is represented by that brighter blue arrow. And most school districts focus there. And so, if I'm a teacher, for me, the ultimate, and I'm a teacher, and then I look at the green, the lime-green arrow that represents some, one or more of our competencies, and says, let's say it's critical thinking, and I'm a government teacher, how am I giving students the opportunity to critically think within this, within the standards that I'm teaching? Or if it's creativity, am I allowing them to be creative? Or I'm allowing them to communicate? Or am I allowing them to collaborate together to find their voice? And so I am intentional. And when you intentionally infuse your curriculum that we already have laid out
Yeah.
With some very distinct and common throughout competencies that we have developed as necessary for our graduates, then you have that zone of deeper learning. And that's, that's what we are trying to. So it's not, they're not necessarily buzzwords. I mean, yeah, there'll be some nice visual diagram, but we're hoping that teachers then look at that and say, with my lesson, with my unit, with my activity, am I intentionally doing some of these things? doing some of these things?
I've got two quick questions.
Feel free.
Yeah. Nobody else is jumping up there. I just had two quick questions. One is, in this process, do you work with other districts that are going through this? I mean, I'm just sort of curious what that collaboration looks like and how you...
So they, they bring in, oh, I don't know, a dozen or more districts within our cohort?
It's a very packed room.
Okay.
Yeah. It's a very full room and there's, ranges from, we have a dozen, some have three or four smaller school districts. We have in the past worked with Reynoldsburg, we've done a lot. Columbus City is in our cohort and they've actually been in the news as they've done community meetings and Batel has helped to guide that work with them because they didn't even have the strategic plan to land on like we did. And so, yeah, there are several districts. Granville is one that we've worked with. Huber Heights, we've worked with, they're in our cohort, so yeah.
Great.
There's also a more national network through Ed 21.
Okay.
So there's some school districts who are probably six, seven years down...
That's what I was wondering.
Down the trail on this thing already. Karen Garza, who is leading this at Batel, came from Virginia Beach and Houston. Both of them were very big in this work. I think I have this correct, that in their work in Fairfax County in Virginia, actually on Portrait of a Graduate led to state regulation, which I hate to say, in which every school district was required to create a portrait of a graduate. So you go from, yeah, that's why I left that state.
We'll give people ideas, John.
So we don't want that. We like, but there's, so there's a larger network of people that, that our team is learning from and seeing where that, you know, to the answer to the question, what does this look like in the classroom? There are places out there that are fully embedded with learning frameworks and assessments built into the system around those competencies that are making headway.
Okay. Great, thank you. And then the second question was, I think you alluded to this, but is this also a way to help us figure out what not to do? Because often when you say no, like, that's a great idea, we're not going to do that, people take that as a negative. But if you have something like this to point to, it's like, you know what, that's a great idea, but we're headed in this direction.
Absolutely.
I mean, is that a way that other districts are using this too?
Absolutely. It's a, it's a, it's a great filter by what we make decisions on, what we want to continue in the work that we do and invest in in the future. Absolutely.
So for parents who are going to be introduced to this concept, one of the first questions I think they're going to have is, okay, so what does this, what does this mean for me? And for my, how, what's going to be different because we come up with this? Anything?
I'm doing really well. No, no, come on up. Again, I, I think it gives us, kind of like to your candy, it gives us that North Star. It gives us, this is what we are focusing on, and I'll go back to that word that they're buzzing about back here. It, it gives us an intentional focus on the work that we do through our system so that when your child graduates from this district, regardless of the high school, here are the skills that they are going to have, whether they go directly to the military, directly to the workforce, directly to college, that they know that a Westerville graduate can do these things. It makes them highly valuable, very, very competitive, marketable, in whatever venue they want to go to. Because, and some of you work with our business advisory councils, we actually were doing this work with the business advisory councils of our businesses, saying, here are the skills. And none of it was about, I need a kid to do algebra, I need a kid to put his comma in the right place. It was about, I need kids who can communicate effectively with our clients and customers, who understand the perspectives of our business, who can think and solve problems together. Those are the very things that our businesses have said in parallel to this work that they desperately need in their workers. And so we are intent on creating a graduate who is competitive when they leave our system. And so that is the focus and the value that, that this work brings.
In terms of community engagement, are we thinking, are we going to do in-person, community-focused groups, community conversations, meetings? Or will it be through something imperson, more impersonal like thought exchange?
And some of that's still being developed en masse, in the, in the, looking at the things that we're developing, and there's a tool like Thought Exchange that can reach a lot of people very, very quickly. But as we develop this, we are still designing what that looks like, even as we kick off and start next school year, whether we bring the community in to do gallery walks or whether we do some kind of showcase with the work so that they do build an understanding of what their students' experience are going to be. But we are still designing that. And as we go into the next year's cohort, implementing and making it a part of your cultures, the work for Batel, they may very well help us develop some of those strategies as well.
In fairness, they won't tell you, but I will. I've kept reins on them. They're very anxious to go down those paths quickly, but I wanted to make sure that the board had a full understanding of what they were looking at and what does that mean? And to be able to, for the board, to give them some thoughts about those kind of components, how they feel about this, what does that work look like? I think it's important that the board has a full understanding of what this is and what it can be for us as a district before we get too down, too down the path. So I was the speed bump. They're ready to run right over top of me, though.
My turn? I may have this wrong. Here's the way I'm seeing it. We have done so much good work. Lot of great big pieces, smaller pieces, pieces here, pieces there. Massive change has occurred in the district over the past several years, really full bore on change. All of it is good work. Portrait of a Graduate doesn't jettison any of that work. The way I see it, Portrait of a Graduate in my mind is elevated above the components of work and actually is rather like an umbrella of competence across it. So one of the things that I want to make sure doesn't happen to these competencies, I don't want to see them become processed out of meaning. You know, Tracy, you mentioned the character education stuff, which I got to admit, I used to grit my teeth over because having a word of the day or a word of the month loses meaning over time. The what I, the way I look at this is, you were talking, Scott, about, Scott Reeves, you were talking about making it part of the culture. In many ways, the competencies on this forum already are part of our culture, but we have not probably, we being education in general, in the guise of the accountability movement, these competencies have unfortunately, in policy and everywhere else, often come to get short shrift. And Portrait of a Graduate in my mind allows us to, again, as we probably once did, or at least in my golden age of education that exists somewhere in my mind, we used to think about, explicate, celebrate these kind of competencies all the time. You know, we talk about, in most districts, the strategic plan is the top of the deal. Strategic planning is necessary and it is important, and I believe in it, but it leaves me cold. Because too often in strategic planning, the heart, which is in these competencies, doesn't come through. So what I see in Portrait of a Graduate is taking those components of work that we have, those important components of work that we have, and making sure that those are aligned pre-K through 12 with child development, with academic development, with social development, so that what we look at when we talk about a Portrait of a Westerville graduate isn't state tests. It's not how we rated on an indicator here or there. And it also isn't about, necessarily about that video, which kind of made me worry because I did not want to think of a world without humanity. I do not want to think of a world that drives our children to believe that that is life because technology is not life. Technology is a tool. This is much more about life than the robotic dog. So the way I see Portrait of a Graduate, summing all that up, it aligns, it explicates, and it chooses to say the things that need to be said about human development. Am I getting it or am I making it too romantic?
It sounded very romantic.
Cue the Beethoven.
But you said it probably far more eloquently than I have over the last 10 minutes. That's exactly what we're looking at.
So I got it.
No one has ever accused Nancy of speaking romantically in this particular setting. But I like what she said. I had a couple other things, but they really mostly touched on them. I was, you know, with other school districts and you kind of touched on that and what's the process and you all have touched on that. If I counted correctly, there are 30 competencies here.
Okay.
Right?
I'll trust you.
Harrisburg has six, Minnetoka has eight, Boone County has 10. I'm going to tell you what you already know. Eliminating is going to be the hardest thing, right? And when you start eliminating some of these core competencies, I, I agree with Ms. Altman just absolutely, that anytime you do alignment, things are left out. And often, they are really good things. And so I personally love anytime an organization can get more focused. And I'm not the sharpest knife in the drawer. I can't speak as...
Romantically.
Romantically, thank you. But it sounds like to me, we're doing really good stuff. We want to make sure it's all pointed in the same direction. And when somebody says to us, Vaughn, in the beginning, a parent, well, tell me this is how, how you're going to impact my child, well, we want your child to leave our school system with these eight competencies. And so our curriculum, our teaching methods are going to be aligned to helping your child develop these competencies. Because whether it's building things robotically or whatever, wherever they go, these core competencies, I looked at all 30 of them and I thought, wow, okay, yeah, which one of these are you going to leave out? And I understand there's some cross-pollination going on there. But I do have one area, I wonder where all this is going to fit in. And I, I love the fact that you all are here and are seated there hoping that you will not be called upon and that Mr. Reeves will continue. But I would like to ask Ms. Santa to come.
Yeah.
I, I didn't, I didn't ask her ahead of time, I didn't know she was going to be here, but I would like you just to say, from your heart, your perspective, we're talking about the emotional lives of students. Tell us, tell a parent whose child struggles, tell me, Ms. Santa, how will this help my child?
Great question. Good evening, everyone. I think what, you know, I've been with Westerville for almost 15 years and I've always kind of lived in a silo for kind of social, emotional world and kind of the humanity piece that we're always looking for. And I think this is the first time where I've sat around the table with all of my colleagues and it's all threading together. So when you talk about the competencies and curriculum and how you're going to teach things, this makes it a little more seamless in every single educator being able to teach all these pieces together instead of in separation in so many areas and hoping that your kid who's struggling gets it. So I think when you see, whenever, right, that's the hard work narrowing down these competencies, but all of them are very good. And then knowing that my fourth grader is going to get it this way and my sixth grader is going to get it this way, and it's not hit or miss or inconsistent or incongruent, I think what this plan speaks to is when it's deeper learning, it's melding it all together really nicely and it's not just talking curriculum or not just talking social, emotional, learning and competencies. It's truly a blend. And, you know, when Scott says we're all at the table together, I mean, this is the first time for me that literally every department's been at the table together, trying to take into consideration every single piece to, to our roles.
Go ahead.
While I'm here, what we got?
Okay. So how do you get everyone on the same page?
Man, that's a Barbara and Scott and Dr. Kellogg and...
You passed the buck.
Well, I think, you know, what's nice and, this team, if you've seen any of our facial expressions, we're starting to work together in such a more thoughtful way where I don't, we're not there yet, but everyone's voice is being heard. And so to be able to make sure if, if social, emotional, or learning doesn't show up in the right way, that's on me. You know, if a representation of a certain piece doesn't show up, then I hope the right people are on this table and we've got to make sure that we've said those pieces that are critical.
And that's the part that I wanted to hear, that in your leadership, and I was pointing to Scott and all of you, in your areas of leadership, I covet for you that you feel like as you paint this picture, this portrait, that you have the right and strength and voice to speak your part of the puzzle. If special education is leaving out, left out, speak into that. If elementary is not quite as strong as it, speak your piece of that. Now, I, I suspect that that's already happening. I'm, I'm not, I'm not saying, well, I, I hope that's happening. I, I think I'm affirming because, because 21st century skills, rigorous academic content equals deeper learning for any child's ability. Because rigorous academic content is different for different students. The skill levels that they will be able to absorb for the 21st century will be different. But if we have a consistent portrait, then we can be proud. This is what we're trying to do. And I, I didn't ask if, I didn't ask her ahead of time, but I, I, I really love what you all are trying to do with this. I'm just speaking for me, really. Anytime an organization tries to get more focused, it's hard because you're going to have to leave some good things out to do better and best. I applaud, I think we applaud the amount of work that you all have already put in. Any other? Did you want to add any more to kind of what the team has done?
Just a couple. So first of all, when I look at the Academic Affairs team, this is a tremendously talented bunch of very passionate and hard-working people. And, and I think they would tell you, the several months of them trying to come together and coalesce around this has had ups and downs and rough spots and, and those moments that they needed to have. And I think they're finally feeling confident of, in their understanding of what this is and what it could be for the district, that they can transfer that understanding into the leadership skills it's going to take them moving forward. Because this is a huge lift. This is 15,300 students, this is 900 teachers, this is a lot to move, to impact instruction across every single classroom. And we have tremendously fabulous teachers and what we, I think what we share in is the hope that this is an invigorating piece for our teachers and our principals and our buildings. Because if you look at that, that... Because if you look at that diagram up there, that little blue line of rigorous academic content has over-dominated the conversation and the measurement of schools for way too long. It's exactly the reason we've been down at the State House till 2:30 in the morning. There's too much weight to the wrong thing. And the other side of the coin is, when you talk to parents, and community members, and business people, the green spot is what they're looking for. And when you talk to our teachers, when they're doing that work, that's what's really satisfying and invigorating to them. And so, we want to create something that builds a culture that says, yes, that is an implicit priority for us, instructionally, and take some of those shackles off from thinking that. And part of that move's going to be difficult, because we're not giving up on the rigorous academic content and the measure of those, but we are being very intentional about widening our efforts around that 21st century skills. We've shared that video three times with students at Superintendent's Advisory, and every single time, when I turn the lights back on and wake them up again after watching the, no, it's not true, they watch with great glee, and every single time, the first thing I heard out of any student after a moment of silence was, that scared the bejesus out of me, thinking about their future that way. And every time I watch it, I think about all those Mason guys over at South in the wintertime, laying brick, and could have had a robotic arm doing that, and any kind of weather force, and gotten it done, too. So, I think there's a lot to be learned, and I'm very proud of the work they're doing. They have, they have been very anxious to move, and I really appreciate what I'm sensing is the board's response to this tonight, because I want them to feel, I'm hoping that we move forward, and we all feel validated in that we can get there. Because it's going to take some work. So, proud of them, and I thank them for the work, and thank you to the board for your attention to it.
Thank you all very much for coming tonight. Any final words, or you feel good? All right. Thank you much. Thank you, thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item 6.01, Public Comments. We have no one signed up this evening. Agenda Item 7, Financials, Resolution, 7.01, Resolution to Approve the Purchases in accordance with O R C 5705.41 (D), second parentheses 1, and Board Policy 6320. That was really fun.
Exciting.
Do we have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Marshall, would you like to explain what I read?
Absolutely. Thank you, President Valardo, members of the board. So, these are then-and-out purchase orders. What this means is that these are purchases where we have an invoice date that is prior to the purchase order date. So, we have two different ones on here. One is for Columbus State Community College to the bookstore, and these were for textbooks purchased as part of the College Credit Plus program from the fall. So, these amounts were budgeted for, we just didn't have a purchase order in place. And the other one is to the Hamilton County E S C for tuition. So, these are for court-placed students that are in Hamilton County somewhere, where Hamilton County E S C is providing the education. Because as state law works, the resident district is responsible for the cost of educating students, regardless of where they're placed throughout the state, so. And those, we have budget, we have dollars budgeted, but as far as getting a purchase order in place, we never know where those are going to show up, because they are placed by the court, and we have no say over that. And no one contacts us ahead of time, so.
Thank you. Any questions, anything? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Dr. Nesterbaker?
Yes.
Mr. Valardo?
Yes. Agenda Item 7.02, A Motion to Approve the Financial Report and Investments for January 2020. A motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you very much. Ms. Marshall?
Yes, thank you again, President Valardo, members of the board. So, we are going over the January, month-end, January 31, 2020. Just realized, I wrote 19 on, I had 19 on here. 2020, month-end financials. So, for the general fund, we had year-to-date receipts of 122.5 million, year-to-date expenditures of 108.6 million, and we ended with an unencumbered fund balance of 131 million. For all funds, we had year-to-date receipts of 163.3 million, and year-to-date expenditures of 155 million, and we ended with an unencumbered fund balance for all funds of 178, 178 million. Not a lot of change in the investments either, pretty much the same as the previous months.
Okay. Any questions, comments? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Dr. Nesterbaker?
Yes.
Mr. Valardo?
Yes. Agenda Item 7.03, A Motion for Amended Appropriations for All Funds for Fiscal Year 2020. A motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you much, Ms. Marshall.
Thank you again. So, we have a few adjustments to appropriations. The largest one is for a new grant, the Innovative Strategies Grant. That's a state grant that we've received. It's for transition work that we do with the Alpha Group. And then, we have a couple of additional budget requests through our Student Activities Funds, and our Building Principals Funds, that do mostly to fundraising activities that they've done above and beyond what they had originally budgeted for. And then, we had an increased allocation in the Auxiliary Services Fund.
Thank you much. Any questions, comments? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Dr. Nesterbaker?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mr. Valardo?
Yes. 7.04, Amended Resolution Accepting Amounts and Rates for Tax Year 2019, Collection Year 2020, as determined by the Budget Commission, and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor. May I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Marshall?
Yes, thank you again, President Valardo, members of the board. So, this is amending the 2019 tax rates, because we passed the bond issue in November, and that applies to tax year 2009, collection year 2020. So, this will be amendment for what the tax budget, what we had already previously approved last spring. You will see another resolution for next year's budget in March.
Questions or comments? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Dr. Nesterbaker?
Yes.
Mr. Valardo?
Yes, thank you very much. Agenda Item 8, Personnel, a Consent Agenda. Does anyone have a difficulty with voting on 8.01 and 8.07 together? If not, I'd like a motion and a second to assume those together. No, I don't need to do that, do I?
It's a consent agenda, so you don't need to...
Thank you, I forgot that this time. I remembered it last time. Okay, a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you very, yes, sir.
Thank you. President Valardo, members of the board, Dr. Kellogg, I'd like to present for your consideration tonight's Personnel Consent Agenda. Some of the highlights include, we have nine resignations from classified and classified substitute positions, as well as one licensed teacher resignation. We have the employment of five individuals in a number of classified substitute and classified positions. And finally, in the Licensed Employment Section, we have the employment of a number of people to various supplemental and classified people activity programs. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, sir. Any questions, comments? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Dr. Nesterbaker?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Valardo?
Yes. Moving on, Agenda Item 9, Old Business. We have none. Agenda Item 10, New Business. And 10.01, First-Reading Employment Administrators, 10.02, First-Reading Employment of Professional Staff. I think you're going to address those together, right?
Yes, please.
Thank you.
Again, President Valardo, and members of the board, Dr. Kellogg. Policy 1520, the employment of administrators, and Policy 3120, the employment of professional staff are very similar. The only difference is, we have the administrator section, so we have to make sure it's listed in section, kind of with the 1000s. And then, the professional staff, which includes certified licensed staff, is in our 3000 section. This evolves from the enactment of House Bill 491, Limiting Treasurer Liability Regarding the Confirmation of Employee Licensor. This law now requires notification of valid licenser to be provided to the treasurer prior to any payment. These revisions reflect current Ohio law, and should be adopted to maintain accurate policies.
I assume the treasurer would be in favor of us voting, and...
That assumption is correct.
That's right. And obviously, this is first reading, so there's no vote at this time. Any questions at this point, though? None? 10.03, First-Reading Policy 3120.04, Employment of Substitutes.
Yes. Once again, we've got a change in Ohio law, Senate Bill 216, as well as in the Ohio Revised Code, has made some changes to substitute teaching license. It used to be kind of short-term, up to about 60 days, and then, long-term. Now, the substitute licensers are within one year and five years. So, that's really the main gist of making sure our policy is reflective of that change.
Thank you. Change in Ohio law, so, there you go. Imagine that. No questions at this point, right? None? 10.04, New Middle School Curriculum Course of Study, Global Citizens. Share with us.
I, thank you. During the 1718 and 1819 school years, the middle school design team worked collaboratively to find ways to enhance the middle school experience. The design team's AIM statement articulates, "Every Westerville City middle school student is actively engaged in dynamic learning experiences and environments that develop learning and life skills for academic and personal success." So, see, there's another thing that aligns to that portrait of a graduate. This team, the Curriculum and Instruction Action Team, prioritized new course offerings. And if you recall, last year in March and April, you approved several new courses, 1 and 6, a few in 7, and a few in 8. One of those that was board-approved last year is Computer Science for Innovators and Makers, to be offered in the 2021 school year as a semester elective. We're also asking that you consider this new course, which I also want you to consider, a slight name change. When we went to Middle School Curriculum Council, this was our current name, it got some feedback of, you know, maybe we can come up with something better. So, we pooled the team, and we got a few bits of feedback, a few suggestions, and Global Game Changers came up as a much more engaging name for our 8th grade students. So, we have, you know, the Innovators and Makers, that's the computer science piece, and then, Global Game Changers is our proposed course name for this, which was a late development. So, something to consider. As I know, this takes two readings, but really, and I loved, it couldn't have been more perfect for the young woman who is getting recognized this evening, that part of her work was around global scholars. One of the components of kind of our rubric, if you will, of what are some things that we're looking for in this additional course, we felt that we had a number of course offerings that supports our engineering side. We wanted something that focused more on the humanities, and also, it was important for us to continue to connect to high school experiences. You know, with Engineering Extreme, now we have a, you know, 7, 8, 9 connection. And so, we felt this Global Game Changers course will help prepare students, and engage them in a way that they might want to continue with the Global Scholars Program, which has just offered just amazing things for our students. Hopefully, you get a chance to, if you haven't already, as a board member, there's something in May where they recognize the students, which is pretty awesome to hear, so, as a high school opportunity. So, questions and comments about this course?
Any questions or comments at this time?
Well, I'll just say, I'm an anthropologist, so yay. Appreciate you all addressing this other side.
Excellent.
I like to think of them maybe as not two separate things, but two sides of the same coin. Right?
Yes, that's a great way to look at it.
And I do have one quick question, if you can just clarify, because I haven't had the opportunity to ask. So, when we bring a course like this, we're thinking about, you know, instructors, teachers required?
Yes.
What kind of implication will we expect for numbers of what we might call FTEs?
Yes, what we have requested, so for the Computer Science for Innovators and Makers, we are hoping to have two FTE for that course, as well as two FTE for this course, to be shared between the four buildings. That's our request, our recommendation, maybe. Is that the right word, better word? John?
Yeah, we had built in, when we were doing middle school last year, split between the two years, and so, the portion from last year's FTE for expanding the middle school programming was rolled into this year. So, we did part last year, and part this year. So, it's in our staffing plan, and we'll be talking more with the board about in the next couple of weeks. So, it's baked into what we're working at within the forecast.
I just want to address this, since I'm curriculum liaison.
Absolutely.
I had a lot of discussion with Scott Reeves, and with Dr. Knapp, and also was present for the Middle School Curriculum Council, and of course, have been involved in middle school redesign. This is one of those pieces that we've said that we would be bringing onboard in additional course, and the development of the course has occurred over many months. And then, for it to come to this point, one of the things I think is really exciting about this course is the culminating project. And what we're looking at in this course is, as we have been in all of the electives that we've developed, is the ability for our young people to really expand the way they think about issues that impact whatever the course is about. And in this case, we're asking our middle schoolers to really take a look at what's going on globally, the issues that are affecting so many parts of the world, and that then affect all of us, and really dig into what the research says, and dig into what's being said about possible ways to address issues, to look at both sides of issues. It's a wonderful course for the development of critical thinking skills, and I appreciate that very much. And I did want to let you know, John, how much I appreciate the work of the committee that spent so many months working to make this happen. So, thank you very much for that work.
Thank you.
I, I'll tell you what I think. Every time, seriously, every time you or someone else brings a new course option to us, is, and Dr. Nesterbaker will understand this more than, certainly more than me, I would suspect more than any of us, the amount of depth, and preparation, and background work, just the documents that you bring to us about, here are the learning targets, here's the assessments, here's the instructional strategies, and all this, I, seriously, I, if, I, a long time ago, I thought we bought a book, and told the teacher, teach from this book, and this just teaches me so much, and I wish for the community the blessing of understanding how much depth and work goes into these recommendations. I personally love the whole global thing. I mean, I love that. And I like, I like your new, the new...
Global Game Changers.
I like that a lot.
We wanted a noun, and we wanted it exciting for each grader.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, a committee member suggested that, which I thought was really cool.
Yeah, and there is alignment with the high school, global scholars piece, and, yeah, all of that.
And I want to, the Columbus Council on World Affairs has been extremely helpful in this work. They offer some middle school courses over the summer. They said, hey, your teachers can come and learn. And so, they have been extremely helpful in guiding this, and helping to develop it. So, I want to thank them, too. Jessica, specifically.
Wonderful stuff. Anybody else? I need to stop, yep. Anything else? Thank, yeah, go ahead.
I will say one, and I looked, and she is not here, but I've also already gotten positive feedback in one email from a community member around this course, so I just wanted to share that. So, thank you.
Frame that.
I know.
I'm just saying. Agenda... Please, no comments up here. I'm trying to do this professionally. Agenda Item 11.01, Donations. May I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Please, somebody else say it as well. This is just huge, what the community does, individuals, organizations. Please understand, this is so valued by us. Thank you is not enough, but thank you. Please call the roll.
Dr. Nesterbaker?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mr. Valardo?
Yes. Agenda Item 11.02, Recommendation to Approve 2020 and 2021 Student Fee Schedule. Motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi. Modifications to the schedule this year include an update to the annual income guidelines for kindergarten. And last year, as most of you recall, all of our specific course fees were removed. And last year, as most of you recall, all of our specific course fees were removed. So we used to have things for our specific high school science courses, primarily at, by last year, it had really just been at the secondary level. So from the time that I was here back in 1314, students were assessed $20 for a math workbook. We have taken those on to keep costs low for our parents. Also, last year, International Baccalaureate, so maybe they saw what we were doing, they removed their $175 registration fee. So that has been very helpful. There is still test fees for each one, and it's approximate, so we say it's $94 and 122. They tend to change over time, which is why we keep that as an approximate fee. The big change this year is we wanted to offer clarity around the word family, and it has been defined, and I would just like to read it, it's in two different places, both in the middle school section and the high school, because it deals with co-curricular, extracurricular, and club fees. So it reads, "There is a family cap of $300 for co-curricular, extracurricular, and club fees." Sorry. "For the purpose of this guideline, Westerville City Schools determines a family to be all students officially residing in the same household, and siblings for reasons including but not limited to death of a guardian, divorce, et cetera, and residing in separate households within the Westerville City Schools attendance boundaries." So just another opportunity, you know, to keep costs in check and to offer clarity and transparency for our families. So we felt that it was very important, particularly in a document dealing with cost, that we clarified in this. And that was, that's really all the changes that we had.
Any comments, questions? I'm going to vote yes for this, and before I do, I would like to say thank you to the community for supporting us, for the tax dollars that we receive in trying to reduce the burden on families. Because none of us up here, and none of us on this whole floor, and none of us in the district, want any cost factor to be a prohibitive for a student getting the best well-rounded education they can. And if it were not for the support in the district and what we receive, these fees would be very prohibitive. And thank you to the community for supporting us. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Dr. Nesterbaker?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mr. Valardo?
Yes. Moving on to Agenda Item 12.01, Public Comment. We have no one signed up this evening. Agenda Item 13.01, Board Comments. Who has something quickly they'd like to share? Then I will share very quickly, a huge thank you to the staff, board members, and community members who have spent countless hours testifying at the state legislature. We had some community members that went there at 5:00 P. M. and were not able to give their testimony until, I believe, at 2:00 or 2:30 in the morning. 2:30...
2:21 A. M.
2:21 A. M. That's Dr. Kellogg's say of saying he was there at that point as well. But, all kidding aside, thank you to the community, and I know we've had some staff do some either testifying or sending in some testimony. I know that we've had some letters to editors, and our final word is you cannot expect to take public dollars to support private education and have us be silent about that. We insist that you not do that, and we will keep speaking until we are no longer able to speak. And I am overwhelmed and humbled by what the board, my colleagues here, have done in regard to that issue. So, thank you very much for that, and congratulations to our award winner. Just another example of some really good stuff happening in our district. Agenda Item 14.01, The Board Will Meet in Regular Session March 9, 2020, and April 6, 2020, 6:00 P. M. here in this room. Agenda Item 15.01, The Board Will Now Move Into, if they vote for it, Move Into Executive Session for the Purpose of Considering the Compensation of a School Official. May I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Any question, discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Dr. Nesterbaker?
Yes.
Mr. Valardo?
Yes, we will adjourn from that executive session, so you are, well, you're not dismissed, you may leave. You may go.
7:16. Candy, Jen.
Thanks for the candy.